Goodbye, the United States of America. And you're the representative for which fans, one nation, one individual, we would never see in this world.
Thank you all. Call please.
Counselor Eer is absent. Counselor Astora?
Here.
Counselor Donnie?
Here.
Counselor Ah?
Here.
Counselor Howard?
Here.
Counselor Ba?
Here.
Counselor Hill is absent.
Mayor Wal?
Here.
Okay. Moving right on. We first have a proclamation. Which I will read into the record. For National Library Week. Whereas libraries of all types are the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses. Serving their communities. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building. And everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas for people lacking broadband at home. Libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi. Even checking out internet hotspots. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs. And collections that are diverse as the populations they serve. And ensure equity of access for all. And whereas in times of crisis. Libraries, librarians, and library workers. Play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. And whereas to adapt to our changing world. Libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy. Promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries have long served. As trusted and treasured institution. For all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation. Gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers. And supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore I Pete Wall, Mayor Doot, proclaim National Library Week, April 7th through April 13th in Mount Angel. We encourage all residents to honor the library. And explore what's new at your library by engaging with your librarian. Find your place at the library. And witness whereof I have here under set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Mount Angel to be affixed this first day of April 2024. Mayor Wal. And I'll just add to that. We have a great library. And a great community supporting that library, so. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Second, we have another proclamation. Supporting National Volunteer Week, April 21st to 27th, 2024. I'll read that and hopefully my voice will hold out. Whereas National Volunteer Week has been observed annually since 1974. At all governmental levels. And recognizes volunteerism, participation, sharing and working together to make a difference. And whereas the city of Mount Angel depends on volunteers for many programs that are a service and benefit to the community. And whereas volunteering one's time, talents, and resources. Has been an integral part of our heritage since the early days of our nation. And it is essential that we continue this tradition of giving and sharing. To preserve and improve the quality of life. For all citizens of our community. And whereas. The receiver is not the only one who benefits from volunteer service. For the giver reaps the rewards and improves skills and broadened horizons. And whereas each year, a special week is designated in our nation. For the dual purpose of recognizing those who give of themselves. And of encouraging all citizens to become involved in volunteer work. And it is fitting at this time that we say thank you to all individuals, groups. And businesses who have given time, energy, and resources to our community. Through volunteer service. Now therefore. It resolve I Pete Wall, Mayor for the City of Mount Angel, Oregon. Do hereby urge the citizens of this city. To recognize the week of April 21st through 27th. As National Volunteer Week. To honor and recognize the individuals who have made a difference in our community. And witness whereof I have here onto. I don't like that word. It's a hard one. Set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Mount Angel, Oregon. To be affixed this first day of April 2024. And obviously. Mount Angel was a community of volunteers. Subtly unmatched, but. Okay. Now. I have a couple of other proclamations here. And the first one. It's recognizing. Keith and Pepper team for their service to the library. And I know they make a great team. And I know these are very similar, but they both deserve individual recognition. And so I'm going to reiterate them. This is the first one is recognition, proclamation, recognizing Keith team for his service to the Mount Angel Public Library. And whereas on behalf of the city of Mount Angel. We wish to acknowledge the commitment and service of Keith team. A Mount Angel resident who has served this community for 50 years. And whereas during his years of service. Keith has been instrumental in the efforts to fund and construct a new library building. Has served as an officer of the Mount Angel Public Library. Friends of the library organization. And an appointed member of the library advisory board. Has donated countless hours of volunteer service. By performing beautifying projects in and around the library building. And has written a history of the Mount Angel Public Library. And has helped maintain the garden surrounding the library. Has built unique book chairs for the teen area and animal chairs in the children's room. And donated some of the fundraising raffles. Some four fundraising raffles. Whereas he has raised goods and funds. For such the library through his volunteering for book sales, raffles. Jumble, jumble sales and other fundraising endeavors. And whereas Keith's service. Has been an example in the Mount Angel community through. Selfless giving of many hours of hard work, his compassion and love for people. And his dedication to this community. And whereas volunteer service from individuals like Keith team. Should be emulated by all capable citizens of this city. Now therefore be it resolved that I Pete Wall, Mayor for the City of Mount Angel. Oregon do hereby recognize Keith team for his 50 years of service within Mount Angel community. And witness whereof I have. Set unto, set unto, set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Mount Angel. To be affixed this first day of April 2024. And Mr. Team is here with us. Do you have any? Do you have any comments you'd like to make? I can guarantee you the community appreciates everything you've done, so.
It's been fun. It's been fun.
It has?
Seven times for a third.
Okay. Another proclamation recognizing Pepper team for her service to the Mount Angel Public Library. Whereas on behalf of the city of Mount Angel. We wish to acknowledge the commitment and service of Pepper team. A Mount Angel resident who has served this community for 50 years. And whereas during her years of service. Pepper has been instrumental in the efforts to construct the new library building. Has served as an officer of the Mount Angel Public Library, friends of the library organization. Has donated countless hours of volunteer service. Processing library materials. Has helped maintain the garden surrounding the library. And whereas she has raised goods and funds. For the library through organizing and volunteering for book sales, raffles, jumble sales. And other fundraising endeavors. And whereas Pepper's service has been an example. To her family and the Mount Angel community. Through selfless giving of many hours of hard work. Her compassion and love for people. And her dedication to the community. And whereas volunteer services. From individuals like Pepper team should be emulated by all capable citizens of this city. Now therefore be it resolved that I Pete Wall, Mayor for the City of Mount Angel, Oregon. Do hereby recognize Pepper team for her 50 years of service. To the Mount Angel community. And witness whereof I have here under set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Mount Angel, Oregon. To be affixed this first day of April 2024. And Pepper team is here as well. Thank you for everything you've done. Do you have any, anything you'd like to, any words of wisdom you'd like to give us? Hate to put you on the spot.
I would say just raise your hand, volunteer, and I've enjoyed it all. And I've enjoyed seeing the library do what it is today. And very helpful that we have a wonderful library and students bringing us all the grants and all the programs and putting us in front of the public and. And I've enjoyed it. I love our library.
That's pretty obvious. Thank you for everything you've done. Do you have anything to add?
I do, I um. I couldn't let them leave. Official volunteer service without acknowledging them, and so we do have. A celebration planned and I want to invite you all to it. I didn't have invitations. On April 17th, we are hosting a no host dinner at Lou's. And then there will be a reception here following, so. We would love for you to be there just to thank them for. For, I added it up. A conservative amount of hours that I know Pepper has done because she comes every Wednesday for four hours. Is over 10,000 hours. I mean, that's like amazing. There's a lot of people who don't work that long.
And think of everything we've had to pay her for all that.
I, well, I know. I mean, well, think of all, I mean, she's, she's processed every single item in this library. And touched it at least once, probably more, but you know, that's labor that normally we would have to either do ourselves or pay somebody to do, so. It's, and then we have the most beautiful chairs in the whole world because of Keith, so. I know that I'm just very, very thankful for both of you. Pepper was also on the committee that hired me, so. That happens to brought me here. But yeah, I'm just very, very thankful for you both. And I know the community is thankful whether they know it or not, so thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll move on to current of interested citizens, do you have any?
I do not have anybody scheduled.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is our accountable payable review.
Excuse me, am I able to speak?
Certainly.
This is Matthew Pronovost. I live on Taylor Street, as a few of you also do. I was just wondering, I know it's been brought up recently, the speeding down Taylor. And what is the plan to be done about that?
You'd like to address that?
Well, I'm not really aware of any particular complaint regarding speeding on Taylor, we used our. Radar reader boards out there extensively over the last probably six, eight months for variety of different reasons. I know that I go out and sit out there and run radar occasionally, so. Not sure beyond that. I can really speak to that. Any further?
I can attest to you enforcing the school zones in the morning.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any other questions, Matthew?
I mean, I just wanted to add that I know that a member of the community on Taylor Street filed a petition. That I, I think most of the people on Taylor Street signed. About the speeding. I brought it up to city council back in 2020. I was talking to the city manager at that point. That he was supposedly working on. A community safe travel zone, but. You know, we have a different city manager at this point, so. I don't know if that's transferred over. But just dealing with a lot of speeding on Taylor and there's a lot of kids that. Are constantly out on the street and it's just. You know, what we can do to look out for them, whether that's speed bumps or lowering the speed limit on Taylor. I don't know, just ideas.
Appreciate you coming and talking to council tonight. We'll continue to. Do what we can as we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we're on the accounts payable report. And I'll ask council if they have any questions, we'll start with Council Hope for.
Okay, well.
I just have one, what happened to the backhoe and should we be bracing for. Future expenditures on the backup?
No, are you talking about the tow truck?
Yeah.
No, everything's fine. So one of the public works, one of the public works employees was out at the burn pile at the water plant. He got over a little too far over the burn and didn't feel comfortable getting out himself. Jason, myself went out there and I just talked to him because I didn't. I just saved him. Thank you.
Anything else, you?
I have another question.
Who's for a short bit?
I was gonna ask about the backhoe too. And on sixth item, let's see, page five. There's uniform shirts and hats like in the middle of the page, that like, is that you guys? That's what I figured, yeah, I was gonna say usually I feel like it says PW or whatever. I figured it was public works, but yeah, that was my only other question, that and the backhoe.
Okay. I have no questions. The next item is the consent agenda, we have one item, city council meeting minutes. March 4th, 2024. Anyone have any? Romance? Edition user? I do that one item. It's just a misspelling of the name. On page, back at page 23. I mentioned, I thought Ear Perdis was overseeing the fountain.
I did catch that after the fact and it has been changed for the group sign.
Okay, you changed, you changed the name, okay. Yeah, I read them anyway.
That is proof.
Yep, that's proof I left it as.
People left it in as a litmus test.
Yeah.
But although I also see a little easter egg in their history in there, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'm for approving consent agenda. I'll second.
We have a motion by Council Hope for a second, by Council for Astora. To approve the consent agenda.
Counselor Hill is absent, Counselor Ba?
Aye.
Counselor Eer is absent, Counselor Hope?
Aye.
Counselor Astor?
Aye.
Counselor Donnie?
Aye.
Counselor Ah?
Aye.
Mayor Wal?
Hi. From you, we're going to move on to unfinished business and we have a. Water chlorination update report. For a discussion item only.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to bring up two things that staff has been working on, careful. And I will preface this, it's not in the packet tonight, not all of it was. Because we've been asked to make sure that any communication of public, public written communication goes in for attorney before it actually goes out, so. We got a letter that I wrote to the Mount Angel water customers explaining. Situation and circumstances surrounding coordination of our water system here in Mount Angel. And that also includes. Sending people to our brand new water website, stand-up site, if you will, that has a whole ton of information on. That staff and I have been able to put together, which includes pretty substantial FAQ of. Questions that we could possibly come up with, questions that maybe the public would have. What this is gonna look like, what could happen to the water tap? And what we're doing as a city to try to prevent negative things from happening. But then also giving them the information about what potential outcomes would be and. To provide them with a hotline phone number that we've stood up, so that folks can have a direct line in to say staff. In case they have questions, comments, you know, multichannel, those types of things. We have an email address, water@mountangel.gov. That a number of us will be getting to our emails so that we can provide information and answer questions, those types of things, folks. I have prepared a press release which is attached here, which has not gone out of the media yet. But will at some point. And then you've got two really cool. Publications, they have seen the light of day. One is a flyer with Jordan Hader here in library, she's just an amazing person. Put this flyer together for us, notifying the public. That we're gonna actually have two community meetings here in the library. One on Thursday, April 11th at 7:00 PM, the next at 10:00 AM on Saturday, April 20th. Hopefully then people, you know, hopefully attend one, could possibly attend another. City staff's gonna be here, our engineer of record, I think we're gonna have some folks from OAWU that'll be here. And we're all gonna try and answer any questions and school people who. Need some information about what's gonna happen as it relates to coordination of our water system.
Is OHA rep gonna be here as well, or no?
No, in fact, we asked. And they declined. They said they do not attend public meetings.
Okay.
And that's kind of really good enough, okay?
That was nice, OAWU to come out, that's, that was nice of them.
We'll have new OAW staff.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tony, if you had a question, go ahead.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, in fact, I want to really give out some kudos to OAWU. They've been helping Allen out quite a bit and, you know, the folks that we've been really working with very closely in regards to this matter. Couldn't compete, but they're making sure that we've got two people to each one of these meetings, so that's huge. But we didn't ask for the OHA folks to come to talk about that. And then we, I believe we've also got, or we haven't located, haven't been that far down on the website, quite honestly, this afternoon has kind of. Prouse me a little bit, we've got some issues happen this afternoon, so I'm trying to think all the way through. But I can't remember whether or not we put any specific links to anything on the OHA website we have done, yeah. So we're trying to put as much information out there as possible. Probably more information than I've ever seen anybody putting anything out. So I just take, knowledge is power and the more information that people have, the better. I want to direct you to this really cool QR code that Tara developed. And it's, it's darn cool, so that takes somebody by their smartphone, right to that website, right to where the questions and answers are gonna be. Hopefully you give people opportunity to. Get informed.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask me anything.
I don't want to make an assumption here.
No.
First of all. It doesn't, it's, the amount of work that's been forced to go into this is truly amazing and it's very impressive, everything we've done. I only have one question because I don't want to make an assumption. I'm assuming we are sending this letter out to all water customers, correct?
Every water customer.
And is there, in the form that actually goes out, are we addressing non-English speaking customers? Will this be translated for Spanish speaking customers?
We'll make it happen.
Or even, even at the very least. A, so if it says for the Spanish version, please visit.
No.
Whatever, whatever it needs to be, but I just want to make sure that. Those folks are able to get the information as well.
Great point. And also can we have one of our translators at the meetings?
That was next question.
Is that a translator for the meetings at both or one or the other, or both? Preferably both.
It's a good one.
I'd say both.
So.
Cool, thank you.
And I know that that's a big thing for community engagement right now, so.
Yep, thank you.
Does anywhere on that website have our permit? And parameters that are gonna be followed? I'm sure most folks would like to know.
I'll check in then.
I, it's public record, I mean, I can go in there right now, look kind of what you find, but most people don't. So they'll say, well, what are you gonna do? Well, here's what our permit says, it's what they're telling us to do. Right there.
So the letter from OHA that mandated us, that's on there?
That's a letter, I'm talking permit, so like your West Water Plant have an PDS permit. And it tells you, you will send this much out to the river, you will send this much out in solids, you will send this much out chlorine, or not. Your OHA permit states the same thing, you will maintain a point one. Parts per million residual chlorine in your system at all times.
Okay.
Or daily average geometric mean, whatever language they use on the water, I don't know, because I haven't practiced it for 10 years. But it's either geometric mean or daily mean or both. And then there's a. You will not exceed 50 colonies of TC for the month or 420 in a day. Stuff like that, so.
Can I stop you, because I don't know what you're, what you've just said. So can you, can you not use the acronyms and, because I'm trying to write this down because honestly. because I'm I'm trying to write this down because honestly, Counselor Astorga, all we received is a letter from O H A.
Because if they're mandating you to, well, you already have, you already have an O H A permit, a license to operate. And most of them either give you a list of parameters to follow or you don't. So if your drinking water permit doesn't have much of anything in the, in the way of of um, parameters per se, and permissible that you have to meet, then there's not much, because I think you're under the surface water, not surface, you're under groundwater treatment rule, which means that most groundwater, uh, previously back in most of those days, never had it fluorinated.
Correct.
Until you reached, I think, seven hundred connections in your town, and I think after that, you have to chlorinate. Is the rule, it used to be that rule, was like seven hundred connections. Or, or no, it's probably changed since then. I haven't, like I said, I haven't read the rules and I can't remember how long now.
We publish every year the annual water quality report.
Right.
And it has the standards of what we have to meet, so.
There's that, that's your minimum, and that's state mandated.
Yeah, but it shows where we are, right? It it shows how we test it.
That's your annual, not your monthly or your weekly. If folks are curious about that, that's all I'm saying is, is that you give them that information, here's what our work set points are gonna be, this is what we're shooting for, and we're gonna maintain that in our system.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a phone call to O H A tomorrow.
Right.
And then, once we get all of that, we'll make sure that council, we'll send that out to you, like I did with with the sample. And we'll, we'll find that out, and then we'll send it out to you and make sure that it's better than it gets on our site.
Okay.
I wanted to bring you up to speed on on what we've been doing on this. And everybody's involved. Jackie will probably tell you she's not, she is. Number one, because she is a marvelous employee that was able to put this, this messaging, that's number one. But number two, for the same reasons that Pepper and her husband were being recognized, and I, this is a focal point in the community. People are gonna come in here, they're gonna check out books, they're gonna be interested in what's going on, planning on posting this stuff as as many places as possible can to get the word out. And Jackie and really every staff member that comes into contact with public seems to be up speed on this stuff. And is able to provide some of that information or direct the person to the right person to get the information they need. Or at least let us know so that we can get back to them. Um, and this stuff actually just came from the attorney today. So, I just signed the letter this afternoon. Terrible, I haven't had a chance to look at the one with the with my losing. Yeah, this is link breaking stuff. We, but we just wanted to make sure that you were all up to speed. This has been a constant moving target, if you will. Um, yeah, I think water, water, water has been everything that we've been up to. Um, we started flushing, I'm sure everybody has seen the flushing in the system. It's quite frankly, um, as we all know, um, the chlorine, depending on level, can also because of the iron and and that that's in the water, can change uh, the water's color. So we're trying to flush out of the system as much as we possibly can to minimize that as much as we possibly can. So that's why you're gonna see flushing uh, from now until we're done. I'm not sure when that's gonna be yet, just yet. And I'm sure if you uh, took a look at my letters, we're also not only to, because we need the help of everybody who's a water customer, to flush out the lines in our own house and to keep that process going as we introduce the chlorine and get things start moving and all. To make it the cleanest possible system we can. Asking folks to flush, 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 flush running water, um, where I'm known for that. Uh, we're basically gonna take a look at what their water bill was last year. And we'll likely just build in for that, nothing over it, so that we can encourage people to flush their lines out and and to help us, help them make good water. So, and that will go at least through a second.
Well, I think you've done a good job of getting information to everyone and hopefully, when it's all said and done, we won't have people complaining that I didn't know anything about that.
You will, you will.
Oh, I know, you will. I said hopefully. Thanks, Marty.
Well, thank you, and Counselor Powell, thank you for your suggestion. Also, it may never, it never crossed my mind, because I was more focused on
Getting the right words on the paper. It didn't dawn me till I was sitting here staring at it, and also.
Thank you. Tony, thank you.
We're gonna move on to new business. We have in addition to the agenda, which is budget appropriation. Resolution fifteen eighty-six. And you want Tara to give us a rap?
Tara, the carry the ball.
Thank you. It's all yours.
Thank you. Um, so as the cap says that at a prior meeting in February, we had a discussion about trying to get the ARPA dollars spent before our deadline, and it was consensus among council to transition the two projects that we had planned, one in the library and one in the parks, to pave the railroad, well, pave the area around the railroad and fountain. And so in order to do that, we want to move the funds from those two departments, parks and library, to street fund, pay for that project, just to make it transparent, parent, and to keep records where they should be. So, we're moving, we wouldn't, we're asking to move um, seventy thousand dollars from the general fund into the street fund.
Okay. Any questions? I would introduce the motion.
I move to approve resolution fifteen eighty-six, transferring appropriations within the fiscal twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Powell, second by Council Hofer, to approve resolution fifteen eighty-six. Colby?
Counselor Ah.
Aye.
Counselor Hill is absent. Counselor Bow.
Aye.
Counselor Eater is absent. Counselor Hooper.
Aye.
Counselor Astorga.
Aye.
Counselor Donahue.
Aye.
Mayor Wall.
Aye. Okay. Our next item is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one thing that has come up last couple of meetings is code enforcement in regards to some of the garages in town and that type of thing. Um, it's in progress. Uh, Deputy Chief Paul is told me that he's needing to meet with Colby to talk about some strategy on a couple of the issues. Um, one seemed to self rectify itself on Monroe Street, uh, and then a trailer decided to show up last week with cars of it again, so.
Repetitively.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is, well, it is. Um, but then, when we learned that they actually moved out of that building and I'm not sure that they're just in the building on North Main Street or what they're doing, but um, I learned of another business that just moved into the place where they have been operating a vehicle, a pair of thing, and they're doing tie-dye clothing or something in there, so, um, we'll have to be looking into that because I don't believe anybody's um, put in for a business license or um, I'm a little concerned with what they might be putting down the uh, sort of, I I don't know, I don't know much about this. Anyway, it's a moving issue and we're continuing to address it. Um, we're trying to get a police officer trained. And so Charlie's focus has not been on code enforcement, but has been on teaching a basic, you know, officer how to be a, how to be a cop, so. Um, more to come. Triangle paving, um, we did, um, get together with a contractor, and we asked them to please put it off until the weather turns out, it's a little bit better. Um, they were all excited to do it right then and there, um, but it still hasn't been quite dry enough yet and it will, it will be dry enough shortly, but as you drive around, there's not a whole lot of places that are doing paving projects right now, likely because the weather hasn't really operated, so. Hopefully, we can be on the leading edge of that as opposed to that, that tail. Um, as I mentioned in the other, um, when I was talking about the water, it really has been water, 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 um, as well as budget. Um, city staff has been working tirelessly on both, and I think we've got a pretty good project or a pretty good product on both sides. Um, when the budget is presented, I think you'll see some more information. I s- I think you'll see things tied directly to council roles. And um, I think uh, it'll make it a little easier for department heads to quantify what it is they do and give them a little bit better direction. And so, I want to thank Tara for providing us with that direction and getting us together and so we can play with the whiteboard and figure out how to write stuff and and uh, make it all work, so. Thank you. And I just wanna say, um, um, you never know what's gonna happen in your community, you know, just as I was kind of getting the finality, so today, um, ready for the meeting and different people bouncing in the office and talking about variety of different things that they wanted to tell the uh, eleventh hour, fifty ninth minute, eighty ninth second, uh, to bring up, um, you know, then we had called to a, about one call, um, certainly having a cardiac event. And the lady, subsequently died, um, extremely difficult situations to respond to. And uh, for a guy like me who's been in this business for over thirty-seven years, it's still um, hard. And uh, so, I think about those people out in the community, I think about um, the, you know, fact that we're just, we're just blessed to have the time here that we are, and you know, just kind of interesting to you, and I'll leave you with that. And uh, same, if you have any questions, we're, we're standing here, ready to answer, if you need any clarification that you might ask. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I wanna move on to council reports and start this way with Counselor Ah.
I got nothing.
Nothing?
No, nothing.
Counselor Astorga?
Uh, Maze, the discussion's been, and question has been asked uh, for years, running through sports. They've been in the past for as long as their records go back, but only charged a hundred dollars to use Evner Park for the season. And they were told this last week, it was three hundred. So was that an accounting error? Was that just a, a miss on your guys' end on their end? Um, the other question is, well, more of a maybe an agreement can be made because those kids go out there and they maintain those ball fields. They will put in the time, effort, and the manpower to bring that field up into some playing condition and I think it's a little uh, I wouldn't say selfish, but I think it's in our best interest to work up an agreement with Maze to say, look, we'll charge you a hundred, but you're gonna do a field day cleanup, where you guys go out there, get the ball field ready, and you maintain it. And at the end of the season, uh, we'll give you your cleaning deposit back, type of deal. Because in all fairness, those, those kids are doing a lot of work. They go out and they clean all the ball fields at the high school and middle school. And they come out here to use that one up here, and they are, they, those kids get down, down and dirty and they enjoy the fields. So, if we can work up an agreement with Maze, I don't know what that deal was, maybe we only do charge them a hundred and it's not refunded, but some, you know, it's, it's not, it's a nonprofit organization and they're not making money, and money is tight as it is already, so. If we can work with them and come to an agreement, I think that would be a great partnership and bond form with them. So.
Do you want me to answer the first question?
Well, I'll just preface this by saying this is, this is one of the issues that came up. Um, I basically got pinned in the lobby in the police department today.
Yeah.
Um, and um, so Mrs. Farnsworth came in and um, said that they've actually been paying more than that. They've, they've been paying their two hundred dollars or whatever it was, and then she wasn't completely sure exactly what, what she had been paying. But she was pretty sure that she hadn't been paying the three hundred plus the one hundred dollar cleaning deposit, which is in the current fee schedule.
Right.
Been in the fee schedule for quite some time. So, as I told her, um, because she got me kind of flat footed, because I haven't been able to ask anybody, um, and um, um, you know, we're hav- I'm happy to look into this, and it sounds like Tara's kind of got an answer for you. But um, I wasn't able to give her a good answer today, other than, other than, you know, people have made mistakes.
Mm-hmm.
And we're doing our best to, to right them, whether it's nonprofits, whether it's, whether it's anybody.
Right.
Um, and make sure that we are fair, our accounting practices and we are fair uh, when it comes down to, you know, charging for the things that we do as a city.
Right.
And she was very polite, very, very easy to work with, um, and I, and I really appreciate that. Um, but I am, I am interested in knowing a little bit about the history, but I'm not gonna keep, continue to look in the rearview mirror.
Right.
And as I, as I said to her today, she's welcome to come to council and ask for council to take action one way or not. But I just didn't feel it was completely justified for me to make a wide swap, because I want to be fair with everybody.
Right.
Okay? And that doesn't mean giving special dispensation for this ball organization, because I, I don't know who they are. And they, they may be great, great people, but this is just one, one piece of business that comes into and someone who's expected us to um, not charge, and this is not a unique situation. There's another, another organization that asked for a complete waiver for all fees associated with the dart. Um, they, they didn't want to uh, be a part of the Bavarian theme. They didn't want to have to do Bavarian theme. Um, but we have a code in place and we have a fee schedule. And so that's where I come down. Um, so Tara, if you have more information?
I, I can't speak to exactly what they have paid or not paid. I know that they have not paid the three hundred dollars in the past, but I have no records, no written agreement to say that they get special arrangements. The Silverton J B O has been paying the full fee. Um, and so with nobody to tell me otherwise, I said that I have no reason not to charge them the full rates.
I'm sure.
I'm sorry, may I, may I add just a little bit to that?
Sure.
One of the reasons that we changed, um, or we updated the terms of use of city property, it started, of course, with me. But, um, you know, um, uh, Chief immediately asked me, what do other libraries do? And so, I got a bunch of stuff from a bunch of different libraries that were different sizes. And one of the things that came up is that we have to be really, really careful as a city that we are treating everyone the same. That, because lawsuits happen when we don't. And it started in the library, and I don't know if parks are like that or not, but I know that libraries can be very reticulous because of um, inequities. So, that's probably why the, um, you know, the facilities uses rules were a little bit more structured than they had in the past. Um, but if that provides any input.
See, where do I want to start? I, I brought up lists tonight, I'm sorry. Um, so a couple of things, I know we're, uh, at least I hope we're in the process of starting the transportation master plan. I know it's on the list, we'll get to it eventually. I know there's other uh, lower hanging fruit. Um, but just note, I just wanna pass along to city staff is when, when we do that, let's absolutely ensure that the transportation master plan is not only vehicular, but it's pedestrian driven as well. Um, as we have continuing more and more issues that are leading to uh, focus ability to make this a walking down. So, I too stepped into the maze mess, unfortunately. So, cut, uh, first of all, the new bleachers look fantastic at Evner Park. Um, unfortunately, it makes the rest of the Unfortunately, it makes the rest of the park show its age. That's all I'll say, show its age. And so what I wanted to investigate was the process for which, because I know we're coming up on budget season. So the very, the very first improvement that I'd like to find out what it would cost or what the process would be is to make all the necessary repairs to the fence posts, the top rails and the posts. Some are bent, some have come disconnected, those kinds of things, and string new mesh because it's all pushed out, there's boards on it, yes.
Is this the backstop or the fence that surrounds the park?
So it is the lower portion of the backstop extending out first the third base lines. If you, especially if you were to go on Spruce Street, you can see where the fence is coming apart. It would be nice if that was, it's kind of a tiered approach. If that was reassembled and there was fresh mesh, that'd go a long way to make everything look a lot better. And then eventually do things like the dual swing gate that clearly isn't made of the same material as the fence. And so what happened was, no good deed goes unpunished. I reached out in hopes of getting more information per my request to the Maze Director and to Mr. Moffitt at the School District. And I said, I'm not a baseball expert, but I'd like to know if we were to invest funds in fixing up our local baseball diamond, we have three of them. Sorry, softball and T-ball fields. I got yelled at by my wife for calling it a baseball field, there's no amount. How should we prioritize that spending? And so there's discussions about maybe changing the way the bases go in the ground, so it could be used for multiple levels. There's some, some other stuff that's coming, but the fence was the first thing, so I was curious what the process was. Which then led me down the path of, how are things, and I don't need to answer right now, but maybe you can email me later. But what makes things in the park SDC eligible? I don't know that process, I just know we collect park SDCs. So whether that is it has to be part of the master plan or it has to somehow expand the capacity or capabilities of the park, that's something I'd like to know. Because again, there's, there's some additional future upgrades I'd like to see to that. In addition to, there's still two more basketball hoops in town that are the old plywood style like we got rid of at the preschool. So those, those were some of my recent low hanging fruit that I came across. The other thing is, just for transparency, also had discussions trying to talk to the school board to find out what the rules are. I reached out to Colby, thank you Colby for looking into that, about vendors in parks and vendors on the school district grounds because with baseball and softball season coming up, there's days where there's multiple games without any concessions. So how do we have the conversation with some of our local food carts that are parked most of the year to perhaps get them out there? So on and so forth. So, so those are my questions. And then the other thing too is just, I know, I know a lot of us do it, but I guess I'm late to the game and it just finally dawned on me. But making sure that we're, I have a note here, starting the right conversations despite, you know, and encouraging others despite any personal or other issues to try to remove any dichotomy of the city not being part of the community. You know, there's been some conversations like, well, the city this, the city that, and it's like, the city is part of the community. And I made a quick list. We have the city, police department, fire department, school district, library, Knights of Columbus, Chamber of Commerce, Discover Mountain, October Fest, Maze, the Historical Society. And whatever we can do to promote the conversations between all these groups to prevent them working in silos and hopefully preventing future issues where the, our city managers caught flat footage, for example, or the other ways of, like we talked about last time, where we notice when it's a fundraiser for this group, we have a great turnout. So how do we get that turnout to dovetail into something we're doing? So we have a greater turnout, so more people know about what we're doing. All right, I'm off my soapbox now. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Hofer?
Well, I didn't really have anything. The Maze thing, I think it's pretty clear if you've got another baseball organization that's paying three hundred bucks to rent it, then Maze pays three hundred bucks. I mean, if they don't have three hundred bucks, then their treasurer needs to check this up. And I would say as far as the kids going out and prepping on the court, the ball field, I would say that's, we're looking at this invitation we got. We'll spend a hundred years combined volunteering, just start not getting your kids volunteering to take ownership of something they're going to walk by. You know, so I don't think that's bad. Maybe at all, so, anyway, that's it.
You too? Okay.
Let me first?
Oh. Let's do it again, let's see. Let's see if somebody can talk.
So long ago. Joe missed my eye roll. I didn't have a list.
See, I got so caught up. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, me.
I kind of, I have one thing that got overlooked on the agenda. Could I make an announcement before you do your report?
Certainly can.
Thank you, sorry. You may be hearing about a community read happening in our community in April. And how that came about, Jeff Taylor and I were just kind of talking about other things. He goes, you know, it'd be great to do a, a, a school read. No, it'd be great to do a district read. I go, well, it'd be great to do a community read. And so I wrote a grant to Oregon Humanities and I got it. So we, we purchased books for every family in the school district in whatever language they preferred. And I have a few leftovers, so I wanted you to have one if you wanted it. The book is Wonder by R.J. Palacio. It's a children's book, but it's not. It's, it's a everybody book. And I, I think it'll be, it'll just provoke a lot of really good conversations in our community. It, we will have several things going on at the library, there's things going on at the school, but there will be a culminating event on Friday, May third, at Saint Mary's Elementary School, where we will have a discussion and then show a very good movie that's based on the book. Book is always better, but the movie is very well done as well. So I invite you to that as well. But I wanted to give everybody a book before I leave here. Next, here's the tea. And you, did you get one already? Yeah, did you get one already?
I was going to say, I.
Well, that's good. I haven't actually read it. I think we have it at home.
But read it again, it's worth it.
It was a Battle of the Books book.
Yeah.
It's so good. Thank Kurt Vonnegut. This book is really good.
So thank you for letting me.
Okay.
Talk a lot today.
Anytime. Thank you.
More of a Dilbert fan myself, but it's okay.
There is a picture, a picture, but it's based on this, so you can, you can check that one out.
Okay. Moving right along, we have our student counselor is not with us this evening. And we'll do mayor's report. And I just have a couple of things. It's time I found out to do an evaluation of our city manager. And so I got the form out, I got the form in by email today. I'm going to check it out and I will be forwarding whatever form we end up with to each council member. And I'll give you a deadline. And I'll give you plenty of time, but make sure you get back to me. And then we'll schedule an executive session or an open meeting, depending on the wishes of the city manager, to go over that at a later date. And then secondly, a reminder, if you haven't done our annual statement of economic interests or don't do. Think I, have you done it?
Done.
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 Not.
Eleventh hour.
But they do have, they do have the ability to fine us if we don't get it in. And I actually know one from another community who didn't do it and got fined, so.
Okay, I got fined last year.
Oh, you did?
Well, luckily they removed it when they realized they were sending the notifications to the wrong city email address, but not before receiving the notice of fine.
Okay, well.
They are on top of it.
Okay, yeah, they are, I know.
Raising funds.
But the website. I was going to do it this past weekend, but the website was down, so I couldn't do it, but it's back up, I guess. And then remind everyone, we're going to get together again later this month for our budget committee meeting. And I think that's the twenty-fifth.
I believe you're right. While I have my computer, it is the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so.
Was it the twenty?
If you don't have the twenty-third, twenty-fifth blocked out, please block it out. And that's all I have. Unless anyone has anything that's they need to share with us, then we're adjourned the meeting. Everybody?